Mount Freedom Baptist, who is going to do the blessing tonight. Thank you for being here.
Our Father in Heaven, it is a privilege and honor and a great responsibility to be here for this meeting, and we just ask that you would look with favor upon everyone participating in it. Lord, we pray for all of the students represented in the Jessamine County Schools. Lord, we ask that you would help them, bless them over the summer. Lord, that you would let this group of leaders have your insight and your wisdom to make the best decisions for the future of all of these children. Lord, thank you, that you do hear us when we pray, and you do help us when we live to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the special board meeting of the Jessamine County Board of Education. Welcome to the Royce Administration Building. Mr. Moore, would you call the roll, please?
I sure will. Board Chair Steven Scrivener.
Here.
Vice Chair Bobby Wells.
Here.
Board Member Denise Adams.
Here.
Amy Day.
Here.
And Deborah Hood.
Here.
We have five present, we have a quorum.
Awesome. Do we have someone leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Yes, we have six students with us, and I'm hoping that all of the students that are present with us this evening could stand up and help lead us in the pledge. I bet everyone of you know it too.
(inaudible)
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 Jessamine County Schools exist to motivate and challenge every child every day to be a caring, responsible citizen, and a high-level thinker, performer, communicator, and learner for life. That's our mission statement for Jessamine County Schools, and let's let it guide our decisions this evening. Do we have any changes to the agenda as stated for this evening? Any revisions? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as is?
(inaudible)
All right, is that Amy? Amy made the motion? Sorry.
Debbie.
Debbie did. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. All right, we've had a chance to look over our board meeting minutes from May 24th. Do we have any edits or revisions needed to those?
Motion to approve the board meeting minutes.
I'll second.
As is.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. All right, same question for the June 1st special board meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
All right, I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. All right, Mr. Moore, construction update?
Yes, we have Margie that has an update for us.
Construction started at Rosenwald Dunbar approximately seven weeks ago, and we're really pleased with the progress that's been made in such a short amount of time. On May 10th, we allowed the contractor to go ahead and set up their site controls, silt fencing, construction barriers, with explicit instructions, "You are not allowed in the school, and stay clear of buses, parents, staff, and all school operations." And I think, for the most part, they heeded those instructions very well. And then, as soon as school was out, the first order of business was for school staff and personnel to pack up their belongings and get furniture, and books, and equipment out of our Phase 1 areas. That happened in record time, and the contractor has spent, wasted no time getting in there. You can see in the photograph, in the top right-hand corner, what a typical classroom looks in that, looks like in that wing today. No ceilings, no partition walls, every, all the fixtures and fittings have come out, making way for new mechanical and electrical systems to be installed above ceiling. The foundations and floor slabs for the floor classroom addition is complete. Masons were scheduled to mobilize today. I don't know how far they, if they were able to get much work done due to the rain today, but I'm confident that that will go quickly. The geothermal well drilling began a week ago tomorrow. They've really only been on-site today, would have been their fifth day, and as of the end of last week, they had completed approximately 20 wells. We have 96 wells that need to be completed for the Rosenwald Well Field. We will not be beginning the middle school well field until next summer. Any questions? The only other business I have, I believe, on the agenda tonight is a series of 12 deductive change orders that are totaling a little over $18,000 for materials, funds that were left in direct purchase orders that weren't needed. So, any questions on either school? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, we have a couple.
Achievements and recognitions, and if I could have Jaden Bowman, Zachary McCord, Chase Miller, and Jackson Staten please stand up for a moment. These gentlemen are part of a quartet, barbershop quartet, and they won an award, a recognition in Lexington at the Barbershop Outreach Mission and Workshop. That was in Lexington in February. I actually met this group graduation night. I saw them standing there, I could hear something down the hallway, and went down, and they entertained me for 10 minutes, and I videoed. I asked them if I could capture a couple of them on my phone. I was supposed to be working, but they pulled me. Oh yeah, not only are they gonna get an award, but you're getting ready to be entertained, yeah. But the thing that was amazing to me is the talent that each of them have, and they are self-taught and self-directed. So this is a very talented group of young men who have won competitions, but have also entertained a lot of people locally and developed their skills themselves. So, I'll give you a chance to say something if you'd like, but more than anything, we just have to hear you sing tonight.
Absolutely appreciate that you took the time to invite us here to, I don't know if you guys knew we were gonna sing for you, but we are. So, just thank you so much for having us down.
Oh yeah, absolutely. This recognition means a lot, like a lot, a lot.
(inaudible)
Should've sat in the order.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
(inaudible)
Now, I believe that you, as the audience this evening, deserve a bit of a word of warning. You see, this song is a very, very explicit love song. That's right, this song is about a hot, passionate, steaming love affair. It goes like this.
(singing)
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 They already have other acts lined up for you. They're already calling up.
Perfect. Yes, we'll take them.
DJ.
Hey, can you get them into a show, girl? I'll take y'all some of my wigs.
(laughing)
That was awesome.
Thank y'all so much.
(inaudible)
Thank you very much.
Hey, just out of curiosity, can I ask, how did you guys come together and discover that shared love?
Well, short story or long story?
We'll go short.
Okay.
Okay, so that award you said we won, that was our first time singing as a quartet. Not to flex. And after that day, we just like, why aren't we doing this all the time?
But how did you guys meet each other? Like, how did you guys come together? Because I mean, that's, seems like something that's lost.
Through choir, yeah.
Okay, so you all, okay, got it.
Little choir, yeah.
That's so cool.
Arts.
Arts, exactly.
That's so cool.
We're all, we're all, we're all going.
See, we get them for another year.
Yeah, yeah.
See, they already have two performances lined up for you.
We're ready for them.
We're two ideas.
Yeah, we'll take them.
Very talented.
Yeah, I'd say so.
And I'm giving each of you a Jessamine County.
I thought we were honoring the football team with those two kids.
This is kind of a military tradition. I was in the military.
I mean, I feel like I could run behind that kid.
To get to continue to do this, but it is for being recognized for doing something exceptional, and I think the work that you guys have done, the entertainment that you've done, has just been critical. If you think that this time, right now, this is time where we need to come together and celebrate positive things, and I can tell you, you guys made my day to graduation. You know, I'm getting up on stage and not all that excited or nervous, a little nervous about it and everything, and just, you guys kind of brought everything home that day. I've shared that video, I bet you a dozen times with people that are listening to this. I want to give this to each of you guys.
Thanks so much.
Very talented.
If y'all stand up, I'll get a picture with you all.
Heck yeah.
(laughing)
(laughing)
It's got a little weight to it, too.
Yeah.
The four singers and the non-singer.
(laughing)
That's very special, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
(applause)
I actually have a barbershop girl come and sing and hang out and sing.
And you guys can stay as long as you want, or you can sneak out as soon as you want. So, I just wanted to do that.
Wait, quick question. How long is this meeting?
Six hours.
We'll let you all do what you do.
All right, all right.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
(applause)
I had no joke, thought we were honoring something about the football team. Like, those, I mean, that was awesome. So cool, so cool.
All right, and next up, we're recognizing a young lady. Her name is Sophie, if you could come up. And Mark, will you come up with her? And I'm gonna let Mark do a little bit of the talking here about this, but this young lady is part of the Black Achievers, and she received a prestigious community award from the YMCA, which is the Pursuit of Excellence Award, and I would like Mark to just kind of talk about how she got to this point. If you could.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Kurt. I am the business teacher at West Middle. About three years ago, three years ago exactly, I started teaching at West Middle in this district, and I was hired to grow the Black Achievers program for West Middle and West High. At the time, there were five students in the program that I'm aware of. By the end of the first year, we had grown the program to 52 students, 54 students. By the end of the second year, we had grown the program to 85 students. So as you can see, we had figured out the recipe for growing the program, okay? But right now, we're still looking at how we can get more students to an academic level, an acceptable academic level, but we're thankful that Sophie, she has demonstrated that the program can produce excellence. So I thank Sophie for being that example, and for modeling for the other students, as well as for myself as a teacher. So now I know what's, what that standard, what it looks like. Okay?
And Sophie graduated this year?
Yes.
She's a senior, moving on to BCTC, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you're going to be pursuing a nursing degree?
Mm-hmm.
Which is awesome. So hopefully you're working off, well, I was gonna say working off Sunday, but I hope we stay healthy enough that you don't have to. Yeah, if we need your help, I'll be with you. But we do appreciate, I know that you've made a very strong presence in our community. I think the work that you guys do is so important. I think it's a nice reminder that we're all in this world together, and we need to support one another and do everything that we can to make it a place that is healthy and creative for everyone. So I just appreciate everything that you've done, Sophie, and everyone here is excited to know that you've graduated and you're gonna be moving forward, impacting the community the way we think you will. Do you want to add anything to this?
Um, well, I guess I just want to say thank you for just having me here. I wish I could sing to y'all, but I can't. But yeah, just, it really is, that was amazing. But yeah, just thank you for having me here, and thank, thank you, Mr. Hurt, for just always making sure I was on my A-game all the time, and just that I had everything going for me, so thank you.
You're welcome. And Sophie, we have a certificate from you from the Board of Education.
Thank you.
And then also have a Jessamine County coin, and on the back of this, it does have recognize, reconnect, and restore, and I feel like the restore really does identify who you are and the work that you've done.
Thank you so much.
Uh-huh.
I hate it.
Oh, we're going to get to do a photo op.
What's Sophie's last name?
Jata.
Yeah, if you're comfortable, Sophie, shaking hands, they said they'd love to.
I'm not.
Congratulations, sweetheart. Good luck for the video.
Good job.
Congratulations.
400 of them. I hope they're about to get 100.
(inaudible)
Does he really?
He probably was thinking of kids.
If I didn't, actually, he's west.
I thought east.
But Mark, I thought you were asking about Mark. I'm sorry.
Mark was west.
I thought east.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I should've, yeah, I should've introduced, I apologize.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye, bye, good luck.
Tina Mitchell. Yeah.
Tina Mitchell was.
Alonda Adewale.
Oh, is that who that was? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's not Tina.
Oh yeah, Tina, yeah, Tina, yes.
She was just hired last, she's been on duty for a year.
Yeah.
Alonda, Alonda Adewale.
Okay, and we have one more recognition tonight, and that is with our Junior Beta Club, and we have a student who has been recognized as receiving the Social Studies State Championship, and that is Taylor Roberts. Can you come up? And would you like, yeah, would you like to join us? Yeah, that would be wonderful. And I would like to say this, I know that everybody's probably familiar with Beta Club. I don't know if Beta Club was around when you were in school, but I've had, I don't know, I don't know. I didn't mean that, no, I don't, I didn't mean it like that. I didn't, yeah, no, I didn't, I didn't mean it like that. Yeah. Didn't mean it, I wasn't saying anyone was old, yeah.
More than we're in.
Yeah, right, right, yeah. But I know you recognize Beta Club, and I think everyone needs to know, if you're not aware already, that East Middle has a very strong Beta Club, and a very active Beta Club. And this is a group that you can tell is very passionate about their work, and it's a very large group. How many students do we have currently?
Well, we kind of teetered this year because we were staying virtual for Beta, so we had probably about 30 to 40 in attendance, and we have about 50 to 60 on our rolls.
Have about how many on your roll?
About 50 to 60, yeah, for the three grades.
But a very active group, and I think they do wonderful things. I think you continue to get them connected to the work, and I just really appreciate the work that you're doing. So would you like to share a little bit about what occurred with this competition?
Sure, I can. So, one of the things with National Junior Beta is that there are conventions and competitions, and this year that looked very different, and so it was a virtual competition in all ways. We didn't have anything in Louisville, which is where we typically travel, and really, that's one of the fun things about Beta, is going to Louisville during school and being in a convention. But we did have several who participated virtually. We had some who entered some artwork virtually. We had several who worked on written assessment, which is what Taylor did. And then we also had a group that participated in the book battle. And so we had several that were, we probably had about 15 or 20, I think, total, who participated in our virtual state convention, and so Taylor was of our students, the one who won as not just won Social Studies in placing, but was actually the state champion for her content of Social Studies, and she took a written assessment test online as part of that. Do you want to say anything about that? I'll also brag a little bit about Taylor. I'm sorry. I can brag a little bit about Taylor. We accepted sixth graders for the first time when Taylor was a sixth grader, so it's a little bittersweet to see our eighth graders leave this year, because that was our first sixth grade class ever at East Jessamine Middle School Beta. And Taylor was just a leader from the very beginning, from sixth grade on. During the pandemic and during our virtual Betas, she was at every meeting. I cannot think of a meeting when Taylor was not there. We also, she was a great leader for our officers, and my co-sponsor and I this year kind of joked, because between Taylor and our other eighth grade officer, we really had very little to do. I mean, they would remind students when meetings were, they would arrange the agenda, they would figure out our projects, it was just wonderful. Taylor also, I even brought one to show, made us all, the entire Beta crew, some face masks with our black and gold colors for Junior Beta on it. So I've been with Beta now about five or six years, and have really grown that program. We used to be a much smaller seventh and eighth grade group, and we've moved into including sixth grade. In the last two years, we've gotten National School of Merit from Junior Beta, so that's been really exciting. I've also started talking with Lindsay Mulkey at the high school to try to keep this strength, because there is a National Beta chapter at the high school, but it's not nearly as active as our middle school. So I'm sending them some great leaders, and expect for the high school to be joining us, too. Taylor will, yeah. Between Taylor and the rest of the officers, yeah, she definitely will. We've got some really strong eighth graders that are headed that way, so really proud of her.
And you can tell that she cares about this work.
Oh, I do. I love Beta. I didn't do it as a kid, but it has been really, really great.
See, it wasn't around when even she was.
No, well, not in Hazard, Kentucky. I don't know if it was around.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, yeah.
So Taylor, this is a award that we wanted to give you, too, and this is from the Jessamine County Schools, and we do just appreciate everything. You represent us very well. We love knowing that we have this talent in Jessamine County, and it makes us proud that you're part of this community. So again, I want to give you this coin as well, and I'm gonna give this to this roller as well.
I get a coin. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Andrew, do you want to get a note?
Come be in this picture, son. Pick roll.
You want here?
Camera ready.
Huh?
We'll send it to you.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
I guess I could've taken it and not.
Okay.
Taylor's brother is also a Beta member now. He was one of our sixth graders this year, so he's moving up.
So he's got big cheese to fill, what you're saying.
Oh, yeah. He could be vice president next year, I'd really like.
Do it.
Let's see, we'll have to scrunch together. There it goes. There it goes.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
I was just gonna make a couple more, a couple more quick comments. Our summer school program is up and running, and it's been going pretty well. We've been pleased with it, it's been in good attendance. The input that we've gotten from our students have been very positive so far. If you recall, half of that was dedicated to the academic recovery pieces, and then we were really wanting to focus a whole lot of time on just that social, emotional. I've got to give a big shout-out to the organizations that are helping us. They're doing stuff all over Jessamine County Schools right now. We have firefighters, the police department, the YMCA. I was over and watched a group of football players guiding Wilmore Elementary and Rosenwald Dunbar. Unbelievable, the way that they're connecting and supporting our students, and again, just couldn't be more pleased with what's occurring so far. We have about four more weeks left of the program, and I think that we're gonna make some good impact with this work.
Every elementary, does every school have a summer program?
Every elementary, does every school have a summer program?
They do, but we are merging them, so like, one school is hosting two elementaries. And part of that was because of the size, but then also, we really needed to vacate some of our buildings for all the summer waxings and deep cleaning and all of that.
And how many students total?
Oh, I'm, I'm gonna guess 1,500, is that a fair number? And that's through high school, and your high school is structured much differently in that they're really recovering credits, but they're still doing some activities, some fun, organized activities when they're coming in for their credit recovery.
And we talked to kids there having fun.
Oh yeah, yeah. What's fun is watching the high school students having so much fun interacting with the elementary. That was, that was what really took me back, because I think some of those football players are ready to become teachers. We may even get a couple out of that, so it's fun to watch.
A 51-year-old.
Oh yeah, yeah, yeah. Some of, we didn't know, a couple of them are kids, they look so old, yeah, just watch them interact, yeah. And the only other thing I was gonna identify is, we are in the process right now of interviewing principals for Nicholasville Elementary. We anticipate that Sitebase will be meeting Monday at 3 o'clock for a special called meeting to identify who the next principal of that school will be. And that's all I have.
Good deal. Board Member Communications? Anyone? This is Vow's last meeting with us?
It is.
I thought he looked like he had on a vacation shirt.
I actually had shorts on earlier, I went home to put on them. But I do wanna say thank you all. It's been a great eight years that I've been able to do this part, so that's about the most you're gonna get out of me, so, but thank you.
Well, Vow, Denise and I are the newest members on the board. I'll just say that it's been great working with you, you know, and it's been easy to see your impact across the district, so good luck.
Appreciate it.
And thank you for everything you've done for Jessamine County Schools.
I've got six workdays left. I didn't start counting, I really didn't start counting till after graduation, but once graduation, I start counting. It's bittersweet.
Sweet part being that grain baby?
Sweet part being that I'll be able to spend more time with my family, but the bitter part is I'm losing a bigger family in somewhat, for some respects. And I hate this three-month thing, just for the sole fact I can't see people for three months, but I'm anxious to be able to at least get back to say hi and do that kinda stuff, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
The colleague and friend, and is very helpful in everything we've done.
That means getting up in the morning. I am not doing that, I am not. But the best part is I just don't have to drive the roads in the mornings, that's the best part.
For now, we've got 20 items on here. I don't think we've heard any questions or concerns about them, but I'll open the floor up again. Do we have any comments or questions about the consent agenda? All right, I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. All right, now, the action items. We've discussed in our work session, the item number one, West Jessamine High School horseshoe sign, do we have any more comment, public comments or questions?
Motion to approve item G1.
Denise seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Okay, now Vow, tell us what we're doing here, we've got. Two 15?
Two through 13 are all direct purchase orders, and these are change orders to reduce them to the actual money that was caught, that was actually spent, so this is reducing the purchase order to that amount. As Marky said earlier, it's about $8,000 savings to the project. I think you, I think one motion to approve number two through 13, direct purchase orders would work just fine, and then we can go from there.
Motion to approve items G2 through G13.
Debbie seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. All right. Mr. Moore, item G14?
Yes, this is for the Providence School, it's a change order, change order number 10, and this is to meet requirements for the door silencers, so it's my recommendation that you approve this for the sum of $463.
Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve G14.
Debbie seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Okay. G15, Mr. Moore?
Yes, this is change order number nine, and this change order covers the cost by Jessamine County Schools to continue to hold builders' risk insurance policies for building beyond contractual state of substantial completion, and that's a decrease of $9,000, $5,053.35, and I recommend that you approve this.
Any questions? All right, I'll make a motion to approve item G15.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. All right. Number 16?
Yes, this is for the replacement, closeout of the replacement for the West High Gymnasium floor, and this project has been completed, and the BG4s are appropriate this time, and both forms must be approved, there's no budget implications, so I'm recommending that you approve the completion of BG4 project, closeout forms for the replacement of the gym.
All right. Denise makes the motion, I'll second. All those in favor say aye. Oppose say no. Number 17, we've discussed in a couple of work sessions, do we need any more information from Matt on that one?
Ready to move on this.
Okay. Amy, do you wanna do the honors? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. And then Mr. Moore, number 18?
Yes, sir, I'll get Vow to talk about any changes, but this is, what we do annually is change the athletic handbook, and there are no implications financially to this, but Vow, do you mind covering some of those?
In, in the handbook, it is marked what has been changed, for the most part at all, centered around harassment, and some of the change in language that you will see, upcoming in policy change that is legislative, a lot of it's around protected, protected groups. And there's also some changes in there, just in names, and restructuring based off of what you saw earlier today for the new job, you know, the job flow chart, there's some changes, like Sarah's name is in there, and change with athletic director, but the real major changes all have to round the protected groups and protecting that group and the harassment things that go with that.
Revisions to the athletic handbook.
Any questions? All right, I'll make a motion to approve item G18.
Second.
Bobby seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. All right, do we have a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent evaluation under KRS 61.8101F and KRS 1565574D?
Motion to enter executive session.
I'll second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no.
Should we move to the small conference room?
Yeah, let's do that.